Good evening everyone, please be seated. Okay, we kick straight off there, can we have apologies for absence?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I have apologies for the presence of Graft, Holden, Shire, and Lott.
Thank you very much. Item two, election of the town mayor, do we have any nominations?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to nominate councillor Greg Darby. I've been in for nearly ten years.
Can I just stop you there councillor? Do you second it?
I'll second it.
Oh.
Sorry about that. I should know this position, shouldn't I?
Yes.
Right, do you both wish to speak to your nominations?
Oh.
Can I just give some... yeah?
Uh, right, start again now. I've known Greg Darby for something like ten years at least. Throughout that time he's always been an excellent and reliable councillor, a good colleague. He's well known in the community, he's been an excellent councillor for the town, both in previous stables and there, and over the last year when he was deputy mayor, he started to go from councillor Thomas on another occasion. And he's thought in superb class. Therefore, I think also he needs someone with the experience that Greg has, and he's excellently fit for the role, and has all the attributes necessary for that position. Therefore, I'm delighted to propose councillor Darby for the 2015/16, and I would recommend him to all councillors.
Goodness, councillor Person, councillor London?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. After I endorse what councillor Person said, and over a very long time, in fact started here at the same time as I, so he's come quite a bit for the town council, and we know his input is always welcome and tremendous. He has done this task before and he did extremely well indeed, I'm glad of it. I thoroughly endorse everything and I recommend him to the Scottish Council, we recommend him to all the councillors, to the town, I'd probably thank them.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor London, do we have any other nominations for the first poll? Okay, yeah, with that made, can I ask then for nominations for councillor Greg Darby, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
Mr Chairman, if I might, I'd like to take the chair, please. Thank you very much.
It would be great pleasure.
Mr Mayor, you now have the dedication of accepting the office of town mayor. Can I ask you to turn off your microphone? That's the dedication of acceptance of the office.
I, Greg Darby, have been re-elected for the office of town mayor for the council of the town of Stapleford. If I declare that I take the said office upon myself, and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgment and ability.
The date is the 22nd of January, 2016. Thank you. This dedication will make you the subscriber for me, Margaret Care Darby, as a proper officer of the council of town of Stapleford. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, right, so we continue with the agenda? Well, actually, definitely there, that's the next.
Mr Mayor, can I propose nominations for the post of deputy mayor?
I'm on the issue.
And, yeah, can I take deputy, please, first?
I'd like to propose Sue Room, please. Sue is...
You can...
Right, right.
Yep. Do we have a second, Mr Mayor? Councillor London, you said you have...
Yes, I am, it's councillor McCreary.
Do we have a second, Mr Mayor? Do we have a second, can you show me a second, because that's easy process for us. Do you all, those who nominated secondly, wish to speak to their nominations? Yes. Okay.
I'd like to propose Sue Room, Sue was born in Stapleford and has lived here all her life, married to Bob, there are three boys and four grandchildren. She's given a lot to the community by working supporting young adults beyond the youth centre for many years, and now volunteers at help with the others. And in Sue, for many years, I found she's a kind-hearted person, but if she does anything for anybody, that is why I feel she'll be an excellent deputy in future mayors.
Second, please.
Yes, thank you. Sue Room has been an extremely backroom type person who has done a lot for this town already, and as Mandy's already said, that she's done quite a lot for the charities and organisations, the volunteer groups, and she's one of the backroom ladies, and that is the reason why I'm nominating her second because of the work she's doing, and I'm sure she will continue to do more as deputy mayor.
Thank you. Can we, Chairman, take nomination for person three?
Yes, Joe, councillor London.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to stand up for this one, what's your favourite? Members, Mr Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, and home and guests. The member I'm going to propose, has already proposed, has an amazing track record in working and representing all the community in all walks of life, as he just absumed, I remember, of his activities. Now, this member has brought to the town, brought to and have six job fairs, and this is a result of, in the, in the many children people getting paid for employment. So I think it's absolutely brilliant. Contacted Arsenal, the new car factory, and luckily contacted Audi, look for employment task people. If their plans are accepted, as there are two full members here, she wants to find himself a new job. Learned from yours, have been fifty people getting their CGSE cards, that's it. She's not sharing funding for community, can I say someone, dipliberator, to be based at New Coral. Funding has been found for the new bathroom at Pasties Road Recreation Ground, also known as the big yard. This is about to be opened, I believe, next week. And more bathrooms have been added through a bathroom at Ustine Road outside, the town of the corner of the land. Chamberlain's combination of that machine, opened by Staveford Combine Services, Boncangal, Onanon, have added seven members to civil activities. As listed in the address, and luckily, as a member of Combine Services. This member was given the task of his service for obtaining what I call the poppy bench. For the poppy bench. Which was rented to the town and blessed by the father of the world remains on water park today. There was actually two plants, one each, and they are worth reading, but the story how they came about. All these students, sending up the house for several Staveford community groups, of which I myself, along with others, are proud to be to members. What must we call, this member had been invited to number ten, and was supposed to be the prime minister for chat about certain issues. And we must admit, that this member is going somewhere, and we can say it all started in our, in our town council. Therefore, Mr Mayor, on behalf of the town, I propose councillor McCreary, as deputy mayor, for this full year, 2015/2016. Mr Mayor, members of the public, honour guests, thank you for your input.
Can I ask you to ask for a second, Mr Mayor?
Yes, the second, please. Second, yes, sir. Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Yeah, firstly, do you want to speak to...
You'll speak, Chris.
Yes. Mr Mayor, can I ask, many further nominations? Can I ask, then, that you would ask a vote, please?
Just go through, show hands.
For first nomination of councillor Susan Room, so if those were voting for councillor Susan Room, I think it could be handled, please. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Susan, were you voting?
Yeah.
Um, for the second for councillor Susan McCreary, could you show please, show a hand, please? One, two, three, four, five. Mr Chairman, I have nine votes for councillor Susan Room and five votes for councillor John Longdon, therefore councillor Susan Room is elected deputy mayor. And I ask councillor Room to come up to his seat, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, my item five is the decoration interest.
Mr Chairman, this item will come up, if on every agenda that you have to declare, should there be any items on the agenda where you have to declare, it would be really hard to view. I don't think there's anything this evening, and it's just a matter of course, on the agenda, but I would ask you that if something does come up, we feel you're an interest, please declare.
Item six is the appointment of committees.
It's not chairman, I have in front of me, if you may, membership. Is there any changes to this, if you can see the values for next town council meeting, but my understanding is that the appointments are planning and environment, houses, A Britton, our Brown, our Derby, it's Enso, they cool, Bee Hall, J Town End, Leader Deputy, and substitutes for councillors De Grindel, Jay Longdon, Jay Longdon, C Rice, and I Lawton. Do apologize for such David's school name, we used to have two councillors with one name in the last administration, do apologize for that. And for finance and general purchases, I have councillors A Britton, our Darby, T S, De Grindel, Jay Cool, A Hall, Jay Longdon, Jay Longdon, C Rice, and Jay Longdon. On personnel, I have councillors A Dret, our Darby, A Hall, I Lawton, Jay Longdon, B P H, T S, Room, Leader Deputy, and the town council. And a conservative nominee for the five substitute members are De Grindel, Jay Longdon, Jay Rice, and Jay Town End. These obviously will be printed with the minutes, and you would put leadership, let me know, the leadership was, thank you. And lawton's panel, the lawton's panel meets usually twice a year, and it's an opportunity for the town council to discuss with all the holders, plot holders, what's going on on the lawton plot. And the membership of that is set as the leader, the town mayor or deputy town mayor may attend. The chair, vice-chair of the planning and of the finance and general purchase committee, and nominee from minority groups, I understand that councillor John Longdon is going to nominate from the Labour group. The public reserve group, and there's still a nomination to come from the Labour group, I understand councillor John Longdon, maybe to be confirmed, thank you.
My item seven?
Point the town council representative, there are a number of outside bodies who would like the town council to send a representative to city management committees that attend meetings. Now, at this point, this is not a full group, a full set of outside bodies, you can get them in a year, and I should say that I've been approached with a few homelessness just in the usual discussion of my work with them, that would like a representative from town council and management committee. I understand that councillor John Longdon is going to approach this matter, and has agreed, it's not on the agenda, so I won't be reporting it again, because just so members are aware. So if anyone is involved with a group and they feel they would like the town council to be represented on it, please let me know, and I can arrange something. Roxton Woods project, I understand that councillor Shire and Enser will be the representative. The Diggin project, councillor Brian Hall, and town centre management group of team will be councillor Amanda Hall.
I was going to ask, well, I was going to propose actually, the town centre management will be moved to, without the next town team meeting, because the town team, I believe, have sent an email to the town clerk, and they've made it clear they don't want a councillor on that committee anymore. I'm happy for the town, but be representative, but they've said they don't want a councillor on it.
Mr Chairman, can I suggest I will be making a full report to the next town council meeting on the town centre team, and will bring the matter up again, and will confirm it at that point. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for clarification. Not quite, leaders, my understanding is that the group leaders are councillor David Pearson, for Staveford Alliance, councillor May Darby, the leader of Labour group, and councillor John Longdon for the Conservative group. Um, not the point of town auditors, Mr Chairman, just that current town auditors and their groups are checked through by local councils, they, the external auditors are appointed by the audit commission. Those can be seen by by to, but there will be a government appointment for external auditors through by, and I will be reporting the audit to the next meeting in town. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm responsible, I'm responsible financial officer for this town's information, as well as a proper officer of this council.
That one, signature.
Yes, Mr Chairman, we will be changing the signatures, obviously, with the new administration to the bank account, the old psyche account. And my understanding is that the signature will be councillor Mr Amanda Hall, councillor David Pearson, councillor David Koundo, and myself, too, obviously, they can.
Item four, won't you just get down and practice?
Mr Chairman, it's this point in the evening where I got to strangle my husband, because he suggested this event nineteen years ago. And it sounds wonderful, when you're sitting there saying, isn't this a great idea, my colleague will tell you, it's just getting close to the hospital on several occasions. It's a lovely event, we invite gardeners in town, state group, to invite town men to come and see their gardens, because different town men are from here, so a different aspect and a different outlook. And this year I'm launching it, and I hope that you will encourage people, not family, but friends, and neighbors, but all family members, take part in this really nice event.
Item thirteen, who told this calendar?
Yes, Mr Chairman, you have in front of you a weekly report and a set of dates of town meeting meetings. Now, this year, quite literally, something like a discussion of previous administrations, and then coming administration, I have also spoken to the local county department, they will. I wish to reduce the number of meetings, because for all these people, it's very easy to see that the age of transport has lowered, and lots of people working. So I'm trying to make it as easy as possible for people to attend meetings, because no point in calling committee meetings that are continually substitute members, or going after council, it's expensive to call meetings. There's no point in calling meetings unless you have business to discuss, and meetings are taken to town council. So, we have town council meetings scheduled for approximately every six weeks, taken into account by colleagues and like. We then have scheduled the finance committees with, providing there is business to discuss that point. Planning and personnel, personnel only meets anywhere in a top basis, once or twice a year, as required, if required. And the planning committee, the majority of applications coming in are for items that are possibly worthwhile holding a meeting, so somebody wanted to go to the store through the dark, and that's why. And we have a standing order which allows the leaders of the council, together with the chair of the planning committee, and every chair of the planning committee, again, I'm seeing by myself, to look at those states as any reason why we need to come to town council. People don't want to come to sit through a non-meeting, basically. Major items, as we had in town there, we have all mentioned, items of that nature will come to the town council. And everybody will be seeing information regarding to the applications, whether it's a leader on a quarterly basis.
To pass that, since this was all pretty much a mark, I'm just going to go ahead here, the planning, those of you who are on the planning committees, assuming third of July, finance goes ahead, we're probably having a very quick planning meeting, unless there is something that requires that. So at least we can have a chair and deputy chair in place. I would anticipate that will only be
Few minutes, maybe?
Ten, fifteen minutes, unless there are planning items discussed. I think it's important that we actually have a chair and vice-chair before it gets into September, just to get through the procedure and things. So perhaps if they're on, or on line, we perhaps just pencil that in, I think probably, I think might as well have a lot of time to work on, five to ten minutes.
Mr Chairman, can I just say, I will be inviting members of the planning department, the broadside, to come and speak to members, but I invite them to come to the town council meeting. So that all members, not just members of the planning committee, of the events, as I've discussed, as I will be inviting, the borough solicitor to come and talk to about Stan, who is certainly a delight. And the broadside has already said he will be coming along, and again, that will be to a conference, we'll be here.
Just because I was going to make my plan, sorry, I just kept my Richard and the planning department for council, that I said. I used to, used to be statement maker, that this with the horse field, the good one. And hopefully we make it to the conference for the new school year, but any plans they did, I determined, but I changed my mind and viewed it as excellent. I don't need to make this one for the new school year, my duty probably is to need to take a part in this campaign.
This is the chairman, um...
I don't manage it so well, because I'm not...
And Bill Horstfield, who's first lister, will be coming to give a talking standard, that's looking all proper at that meeting, because the local legislative decision's changed, so many things keep...
Quite frankly, items are changing on a standing basis, so you will get clarification.
My advice to all members is, if people speak to you about a pardonation, declare you have been mobbing, whether you're borough councillor or town councillor. Because people will give you their views, you should let everyone that you have been mobbing to own an item.
That's a great question.
Does it count for growth?
It is, yes. Maybe we'll plan, where we'll have a discussion, there'll be a plan more or less.
Uh, planning is an item that will come up, will come up at the town council meeting, it won't be the next town council meeting, but it will come up at the future town council meeting. At the moment, the town council, the last administration expressed a view that they were mindful to go down this road, and it has gone to the borough council, and the borough council have approved it for the area within parish function. I do know there are a number of people who have expressed an interest in being involved in this matter. However, this administration will need to look at this item, and we will need to be properly briefed, and a member of development control at the borough council will come and review on this matter. I don't know what kind of support the current borough council administration will give, whether it will be the same as previous administration or not. But at this point, it's an item that will come up in the future.
It could be quite posited, I think.
I'm looking to be several thousand times, only because what, last time I was posted some, we've been, several members around this table have been to a workshop on this matter. I've been to, I think, five so far, and each time I go, it gets more expensive and complicated.
I can just also, that's of councillor Britain, yes. Um, yeah, I, I discussed this with Margaret, having been on planning in the past, and, and we're hoping that we can probably get someone to come. Probably the first meeting after the summer holidays, which is of September, ideally. But obviously that will be a full council meeting, I think everybody needs, and I think they need to, hopefully by then it will be nicely clarified, whereas I think at the moment, the town clerk, so we're not quite sure what the situation is, and hopefully by then, and they will have a clear idea of where we're going and what it is, but I agree, one of the concerns is...
I've got Christchurch council, another thing they're talking about, and they had a guy from the local, and they're talking about twenty thousand pounds. And then...
But that would definitely, we would definitely want that at a full council meeting, not a planning, I think everybody would have. I think we'll have to be put out of council session anyway, once we decide.
The, the, every member will need to be briefed on this matter, because they will need to know what they are rooting on, and I think, just very briefly, to remember, that not only the town council, the neighbourhood town, will be drawn up by a number of people who live in the town, from various organisations and different aspects of life. The town council will be obliged to run it, and will be obliged to look at the funding of the item, so it's, it's not going to be decided at one meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on, other four things, it's really engaging.
Mr Chairman, we should have a bunch of new areas engagements, like I'm up to the centre, this is just a snapshot. I have, I have three engagements covered in this, this was actually printed, and I know there's a number of, like, mine, it will be a busy one. And I know that councillor, I would like councillor Room to attend a number of events and see it go on. I would like to highlight two events here on Friday the 26th of June, which is when we support our divorce estate. Our divorce estate in the Southgate, we can weekly afford to buy it live. Can I ask you to come to coffee morning, that morning, and agree to support our divorce estate? In the past, we've raised money and for the Royal Legion, for help for heroes, the Common Express, and votes backed, we've reached a number of our charities. Mr Chairman, we should have in front of you various engagements, like, um, what's the centre, this is just a snapshot, I have, I have three engagements, couple of this was actually printed and I know there's a number in play line, it will be a visible, and I know that, um, councillor, I would like councillor Room to attend a number of events and see it go on, I would like to highlight two, um, events here on Friday the twenty sixth of June, which is when we support our divorce estate, our divorce estate on the Saturday, we can weekly call the lives line, can I ask you please to come to coffee morning that morning and do free and support our divorce estate, in the past we've created money and for, for our region, for help for heroes, for common address, um, we've supported families who've reached, we have a number of, um, armed charities, and I will be asking the town mayor to nominate one this year, um, please come on for this, for sort this event, which shows our support for that, um, as you're going through it, you'll see a number of items coming up, um, some of these events are in-house events, others are events which the town mayor is inviting, town of Cappy, for example, the town council support life event, this year we've granted two days of home support, um, digging events coming up, uh, the Stapleford carnival, which is not a town council event, but the town council support, and when you come to your next town council meeting, it will be possible to see before, I will ask people to look at that, and look at what's happening, can I say village ventures, which I have an interest in, also my big thing, my son's a professional musician, um, and I'm very keen, they are a true community and the work they do for, um, what is lonely people, for people with special needs, and we support village ventures, which is an art council, England project, supporters of the town council and Roxton Borough council, initially we've worked at two bands, four events, I have drama at the end of November, I have Chris's music at the beginning of December, so I have two different audiences, as well as a broader audience there, I also have in March, I'm then play, uh, with music about life, all along, talking about quality, I think that should be very interesting for a lot of people, excuse me, very diverse, and in April, we're going to welcome back Jamie Smith, of Jamie Smith's Home, now you know I'm a lady, it's more everything, Steve, David, I think, quite excited for that event, please come on, these are professionals, you're the option, I'd very like to be with David Price, it's a way to get to normal people and it fulfills a lot of criteria, a lot of people who are on their own, so perhaps with the future in the town, they feel comfortable coming out of their own community, please support that event, I know the process that we're able to thoroughly enjoy, they're really used, thank you.
Right, item fifteen is the next, date of the meeting, yeah.
So, yes, we'll see it tonight, in June, um, and I will be, we'll be able to be honest about it then, and also, uh, doing the public report on the stated items that we always have, uh, if you wish any items on the agenda, please let me know in advance, I will not be taking anything for the first meeting, because I have a very full agenda already, um, but if there's any items you'd like to see on the agenda, please let me know, I'll do my best to pencil them in for the year, thank you. Before we close the meeting, Mr Mayor, can I thank councillor Kevin Thomas for all his work and started working this long year, can I welcome councillor May Darby, the post of town mayor and councillor Susan Room, as our deputy town mayor, have we passed this round, please, and standing in for me, this is the town's alone, for this one, um, can I, can I get in fact people coming this evening, and councillor Stacy could invite town mayor and his lady, the past town mayor and his lady, and the ex-town mayor and his gentleman.
One meeting, another meeting, another, uh, can I just, well, all the new faces around here, all forgot, um, yeah, well, that's, uh, perhaps it's all time for a change, Marv, um, some of you, I, I've, I've been chatting to me, a number of you, briefly tonight, as a fact, we've probably got lots of expertise and new ideas around the table, so, and I'm sure we're all here, we're better than Stapleford, but can I, if anybody wants to talk to me about any ideas, any thoughts or any expertise they have, please feel free to contact me, whatever party you're in, I'd be delighted to hear, so I mean, because we're all here for the same cause and, so, and if you think you've got some expertise that I might not be aware of, this could be a great use of those, they do talk to me, um, you can easily get my phone on, or, you know, I'm happy to speak to anybody, congratulations to all those who got it, thank you, thank you for your, your love and stuff.
Can I invite the town, new town mayor, to get the rest of the council and the public, just give two minutes.